For joining us tonight, I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's 6:00 PM, Oconee County Council, March 20th. We're going to start with public comment session. And we are going to stray a little bit from how we do this most of the time. I will allow one speaker at least to speak over four minutes, so he'll have enough time to get his point across. But we're going to begin with Terri Swain. When you come up to the microphone, please state your name for the record. You do have four minutes to speak. Ms. Smith will alert you when you have 30 seconds left, so you'll know to wrap things up.
Okay. All right, I am Terri Swain. I am the rec director at Fair Oaks Youth Center. We are the only nonprofit center, rec center in the county. We simply want to provide our kids in our community a chance to practice and to play in our community. It is a 15-minute drive either to Westminster or Seneca or Townville from our area. We have the facilities and the resources available to offer a full-time recreation program. Last Friday, the recreation directors and even one outside of our county met behind closed doors and made a decision that affects our entire community. They voted to exclude the Fair Oaks Recreation Department from scheduling and playing any county recreation teams. We were not included in this decision and have no idea why this decision was made. This is simply discrimination against the children in the Fair Oaks area, and for this decision to stand is simply a wrong idea at all levels. I would like to propose a solution that all county recreation teams be included and scheduled to play each other. If our tax dollars support recreation programs in Oconee County, then all recreation departments should be included in all sports. If a recreation department elects not to play another recreation department, then their county funds should be withheld. By passing this resolution, you will ensure that this will never happen and never be an issue in the future. I can tell you from experience, I worked with Herb Pool at Westminster, we've never had any problems. I actually taught her. I think this can be resolved, and I don't see any problems. When we start having other people get involved is where we have our problems. To the other recreation directors in this county, Fair Oaks wants to be involved in decision-making when it comes to county rec. The secret meetings, which have been held, cannot continue without our input. I would also like to make a correction that was quoted in the paper, that I did not notify the rec directors of our desire to play softball and baseball. I have a text message from John Galbraith telling me he was the one who did the scheduling for baseball and softball. I replied, "We were going to have T-ball team and softball teams this year." That text message was dated February the 9th. Here it is March. This has been long enough. I would like to thank the community for their support. I appreciate you coming out. It is important to our community that we offer recreation in our community. We are asking to be included in every decision these rec departments make. And by doing this, you know, we'll continue on a positive measure. We've had Mike Crenshaw make reports that kids in our community need to be doing something. By denying our kids that is just not right. I did expect a whole lot, you know, I've retired, and I really didn't expect all this controversy in retirement, but I will tell the Fair Oaks community, if this is not resolved, we will continue. We will continue to push till we get what we deserve out in Fair Oaks. Thank you.
Mr. Tim Mays.
I don't know if I'll have to wear my glasses or not. I'll keep them just in case. I think I can do it. Good evening. My name is Tim Mays, and as a lifelong resident of Oconee County, I was educated in the public education system, and I've chosen to return and remain here after college to raise my family in the best place in the state and in the county, in the country, the Golden Corner. As a resident of one of the gateways into the Golden Corner Fair Play, I have been asked to speak with you briefly about something that I dedicated many years toward its success, Fair Oaks Youth Center. While not a charter member, I joined the board not long after the group of dedicated parents formed the organization to have a local opportunity for our children to participate in recreational sports without having to travel to Westminster, Seneca, Wahala, or worse, not participate due to the time and distance. I was privileged to serve alongside many dedicated parents and community leaders who believed in our young people and recreational sports as a great tool for character and community development. I came on the board in 1998 and was given the honor to serve as president from 1999 to 2006. And here are some of our achievements. It all started in 1996 after the Fair Play Elementary School had been closed, placing a void in our community, when Randy Baker asked the school district to use the gym for a summer basketball program, YBOA. A group of parents worked together with the idea to form our organization program for our children in Fair Play and Oakway areas, approaching the school district to utilize more of the facilities. And with a little financial assistance from local businesses, a liability insurance policy was purchased, an agreement was signed with the district, and Fair Oaks Youth Center was born in 1997. The initial session, initial season was basketball, and we had 50 children who played or cheered. Teams were fielded for baseball and softball, but because our area had been included in the Anderson County organization, we were not allowed to participate in Dixie organization play in the county. So Little League embraced us, and our kids traveled to Pickens, Anderson County, in addition to Georgia to play. This was not an ideal situation, but we were committed to make it work. And this was what has been an ongoing struggle that I will address in a minute. In 1999, soccer was added and remains one of the larger programs in the county. Our team of dedicated volunteers managed to raise funds and upgrade, including lights for the ball fields, dedicating them to Mark Miller Jr., who tragically passed away before he entered sixth grade, but loved playing baseball. The newly renovated facility was the host of the Little League Ten and Under Baseball District Tournament that year in 2000. Mark would be 30 this year. In 2001, Frank Abels became our representative on county council and directed proportional recreation funds to Fair Oaks Youth Center that was being sent to Wahala, Westminster, and Seneca to help serve those children who were not inside the incorporated limits. That year, we were able to add football as an opportunity for our children to participate in. When I stepped off the board, the all-volunteer group had received 501(c)(3) status in 2001, and our numbers had grown to 200 for softball and baseball, 100 for soccer, basketball and cheerleading were 125. I'm here tonight to give you the backstory to Fair Oaks Youth Center and to appeal to you to help with a recent situation that I've been made aware of. As I mentioned earlier, the baseball and softball situation has been a long-term source of contention in that Dixie organization refused to give Fair Oaks Youth Center a franchise for baseball and softball without releasing boundaries by Townville and Westminster until 2003, when we were given our softball franchise and participated in the county for softball. That year, our 15-and-under softball team won, and our 10-and-under 10-girls won the county championship that year. Because of the inconsistency of an all-volunteer organization, as children age out and parents are no longer involved and things slip, if there is no one interested in picking up the torch, the softball franchise was not renewed at some point. This brings me to the current situation where the revitalized Fair Oaks Youth Center Board, with your support, has started down the road to reviving the days of glory to provide a range of recreational sports opportunities for the children of our community. In their effort to reestablish baseball and softball, they ran into the same situation where Dixie organization will not grant a franchise without surrendering the surrendering of boundaries by Townville and Westminster, which is dead on arrival. However, the boundaries are not enforced in Oconee County as stipulated by Dixie rules. I have a letter dated January 31st, 2005, to Herb Pool of Westminster, Phil Shirley of then-Seneca Recreation Director, assuring them that we would adhere to the unwritten policy that allows children to play where they wish in the county. This letter was written in yet another attempt to obtain a baseball franchise and references our already existing softball franchise. I've been told that there was a meeting of the other recreation departments in Oconee County where it was decided not only to exclude the children of Fair Oaks communities from participating in the county for baseball and softball, but for all recreation sports going forward. This is why I am here, as well as other concerned taxpayers, to ask for your help. The municipalities receive Oconee County tax dollars toward providing recreational services to those outside their incorporated limits. As with all government funding, strings are attached, and those receiving tax dollars of the people in the room and me do not have the authority to exclude any organization in the county from participating in activities that they are specifically receiving our money for. We are asking, number one, that all county tax dollars given to the municipalities and other organizations come with a stipulation that no other Oconee County organization formed for the same purpose be excluded from participating. If they are unwilling, Oconee County taxpayer funds be withheld, and if that becomes the case in the future, Oconee taxpayers' funds will be withdrawn from those unwilling to allow our children participate in any sport. That you implement a county oversight to represent unincorporated groups and organizational scheduling meetings for all county recreational sports. Three, that if the municipalities refuse to cooperate and decline the funds, Oconee County should pursue a countywide option, understanding, I'm sorry, using the abandoned funds combined with other funding mechanisms to serve the unincorporated areas of the county. I will be glad, be willing to serve on that team formed for this project. I've already served a county recreation commission formed in 2004, as a group developed, as well as a group of county recreation master plan in 2002, with little or no implementation of our work. We understand that you have no authority to quote "make them," but you can withhold funding, apply stipulations if accepted, and go in a complete alternative direction to serve all the children in Oconee County. The group that made this decision does not have final say, as they all report to an administrator. We encourage you to utilize those relationships to resolve the issue for our children in our community. The southern end of the county is slated for significant future population growth as Seward to the 85 corridor becomes a reality, and the Golden Corner Industrial Park is occupied with new industries and a growing workforce. Fair Oaks Elementary is the third or fourth largest elementary school in the county right now, and will only grow as progress comes to that end of the county. Our young people are our future, and we must guide them in a positive direction. Recreation is a much-needed tool for character and civic responsibility development, as we see what is happening in our community and our country. I question the motives of those who hid in the room and made this decision that will negatively impact the children of other Oconee County residents. I have here a softball that was signed by that group in 2003, along with their medals. They had a good coach that year, I guess. And I just wanted to cover, I looked over these names on the softball, and here are the ones that I know that played on that team and what they're doing today. One is a schoolteacher in Anderson County. One is a radiology technician at Greenville Hospital System. One is a registered nurse at Vanderbilt Hospital. One is a physical therapist at AnnMed Hospital. One is a registered nurse at AnnMed Hospital, and one is in the South Carolina Department of Natural Resources. I've coached a lot of girls over the years, and I run into them periodically, and it gives me a sense of pride knowing that I was able to have a small opportunity in positively influencing who they are today as I hear about their lives and their families. Don't allow a small group of misguided municipal recreation directors to rob others of this opportunity to shape the future positively. I know that you will do the right thing for our children and Oconee County. I appreciate all the work that you're doing in other areas to make the land beside the lake the best place to live, work, and play. As you can see, this has been an ongoing problem that was not just taken, that has just been taken to a new level. It's time to settle it for good. I've brought you the problem. I have not brought you a problem without solutions tonight, and I'm willing to be a part of those solutions. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tara Burnett, and I'm coming here tonight not only as a member of the Fair Play community, as a parent of a child who plays in the Fair Oaks Youth Center. I'm also a teacher at West Oak Middle School, and I'm also the basketball coach at West Oak Middle School. So as you can see, I have dual interests in the Westminster community, also in the Oakway community. And I want both of these communities to come together and settle our disagreements here for the betterment of all children in our area that come to West Oak Middle School and eventually to West Oak High School. And on Friday, when we learned about a private vote that we had no say-so in, that excluded a great population of our students, it was deeply upsetting. And so, we created a petition online on change.org, and let me state you what that petition states. "We have 250 athletes currently in the Fair Oaks Youth Center. We offer soccer, basketball, volleyball, softball, and T-ball. The recreation departments within Oconee County held a private vote on March 16th, 2018, and decided to exclude playing Fair Oaks Youth Center in any sport. Those same recreation departments receive county taxpayer funds to help run those rec departments. Our children deserve the same opportunity afforded to every citizen within Oconee County. They deserve to play within the community in which they live, and we are doing what is right for these children and this community." As of 2:00 today, this petition had 703 signatures. And I wanted to read you some of the comments that were left. Not everybody commented that signed it, but there were some comments. And I won't read the name, I'll just read the comments that were left behind. "Our kids are our future, and I'm standing with our future. Don't take this away from these kids. They deserve to play. We wonder why our kids are turning to other things, simply because everything is being taken from them." Reasons for signing, "Out of fairness and community respect and involvement. I don't understand how or why you would hold a private vote to exclude one town in the county. That's pretty dirty. These kids deserve to play recreational sports in the area that they live. Because it's the right thing to do for the kids and their family." "I'm an Oakway resident, and this is very important." Another comment. "We live in Oakway, and that's where my granddaughter should be able to play. My kids deserve to play in the community in which we live. We have an amazing soccer team, parents and coaches. Patricia, Wallen, so many other teams and athletes. How can all of you continue to leave them and us out? What about our tax dollars? Our children are worthy and great." Period. "I live in Oakway. My child plays in Westminster. We had the option to switch and did not. That being said, this is not right, and I would not like this kind of treatment for my child or anyone else's. I want my child to grow up in a loving, family-oriented community, not in every man-for-himself, money-hungry environment. Where there is a will, there is a way. I think the leaders of this county can make this happen. It should be about the children. Our children deserve to play sports in their community. There is nothing that should prevent them from doing that. We demand change." This is not fair to all the children. This is so wrong in so many ways. Our children have just as much as any other child. Both of my children have played at Fair Oaks Youth Center. Currently, one is still playing, and it is only right that they should be able to play others right here in their own county. Our tax money goes to the rec departments, and we should be able to, together, as a community." Is that it? Okay. There are more comments, but I'll start right there. Thank you. Thank you.
You did well pronouncing it. Thank you. All right. My name is Suzette Snediger, and I am a volunteer coach and director of the volleyball program at the Fair Oaks Youth Center. My family and I recently moved back to Westminster from Fair Play, though the majority of my life, I grew up in Westminster, born and raised. So I'm the same as Tara. I have dual interests here. My daughter Kara plays volleyball in our program at Fair Oaks Youth Center because Westminster did not offer a spring volleyball program. Fair Oaks Youth Center is the only recreation department who offers volleyball currently, which seems a little insane to me, given the huge demand. Our program has doubled in less than a year. Since then, or since fall, we had four teams for our volleyball program, and now we have eight. So there is clearly a demand, if in such a little rural area we can have that many. There's a great need for volleyball and other recreational sports in this rural Fair Oaks community. Fair Oaks offers many sports year-round that are more accessible for these families, and they do this all with volunteers. I can tell you from personal experience that this is a great group of people with good hearts, and they're taking a lot of time and making a lot of sacrifices to make a difference in these kids' lives. From me personally, just being involved with the Youth Center, I have seen so many children, including my own, gain confidence in themselves, learn to trust, make new friends, learn leadership skills, be physically active, learn and show sportsmanship, learn and show respect for others and authority, learn work ethic, and most importantly, I've seen them learn to work as a team and work together. If we want our children to work together, we must exemplify this in our own actions and come up with a better resolution. Boycotting the Fair Oaks Youth Center is not the answer. The children will be the ones that suffer. As a resident of Westminster and a big supporter of the Westminster Recreation Department and Herb Pool as well, who I've known my whole life, I also support the Fair Oaks Youth Center. And I'd like to relinquish the rest of my time to my daughter.
Hi, my name's Karen. I'm late, and I'm 10 years old. I've experienced a lot and learned a lot since I've started volleyball for Fair Oaks. Some of the things that I've learned were to serve, pass, be loud, because I used to be quiet most of the time. And I've opened up from joining the team. I enjoy volleyball because every season I get to have new friends on my team. Also, if there were no other teams to play against, then it would just be boring, because then we wouldn't get to see how good other teams are, and it would be really great to play other teams for fun. Then you can feel like a real volleyball player, and not, and another thing that I want to share is that people who play on Fair Oaks' team might live further away from Westminster, Seneca, and so on. So then if we're not allowed to play any other teams, and the kids want to play more teams, then they'd have to drive all the way to another area just to play. For example, my dad and stepmom live in Westminster, but my mom and stepdad live in Fair Play. So it would be a longer drive just for volleyball, and that goes for other sports, too. I would also share a lot more since from now, from volleyball and the loud mouth, but I'm going to let other people speak. Thank you.
Ms. Erin Wood.
I get a little nervous about this because I'm passionate about where I live. I'm here tonight representing Fair Oaks. To give you a little background, my husband and I took our daughter to Townville last year to sign up for softball to play ATU. We were never informed that there would not be a team, so we ended up going to Westminster. We noticed that in the season, Townville did make, but it was girls' range from seven to 12-years-old playing on one team. If you've ever watched softball, an ATU girl should never play with a 12-year-old girl for more than safety reasons. So, my husband and I took this as an opportunity to help our community in which we live and our girls go to school. Needless to say, we never thought it would turn out like this. We'd hoped the girls at Fair Oaks would be given the same opportunity as the other girls across the county. And that is to play in their backyard. Also, to have a community member's love on them, be mentors to them on and off the field. In one conversation that I've had over the last few weeks was one with a parent, and she said, "All of our team members were at Family Night last night at Fair Oaks, and our girls felt very special. We never wanted any hard feelings between anyone. We just wanted to play ball." I'm asking tonight for this to be reconsidered and to let the girls of Fair Oaks have an equal opportunity and for it not to cause any more hardship on our families. Thank you.
Ms. Rosanna Weiss.
I have nothing. I have no papers. I have nothing in front of me to show you. But my daughter, right here, we moved here three years ago just so that my daughter and my son could go to Fair Oaks Elementary School. Because I knew that that's where I had came from. That's my hometown. I ran a convenience store for seven years. I know everyone just about in this room. Because we're family, and that's what we do. We stick together. My child is ADD, ADHD, and OCD. And she has very bad difficulties with her medication. Her current doctor was there since she's been born and has just presently left, and so the doctors, the doctors that she has been seeing have not given her her right prescriptions, they have not been giving her the things that she needs. But she got in the car one day with a purple piece of paper, and she said, "Mom," she said, "I can play softball now." Just because I can't go to Wahala and do gymnastics doesn't mean I can't play softball, because it says right here, Chris Wood has a softball team. And boy, we were so excited. She was so excited. We paid our money, and then we went out, got her gear. She was so pumped up. She got to practice. And then we heard that we had a meeting at the Intervention Center. And I chose not to bring Molly, because I didn't know what was going to happen. I wasn't sure. So as I sat there, and I heard Coach Wood speak about the boundaries, I wasn't sure what was going on. All I could do was sit there continuously cry, thinking of what I was going to tell my child whenever I went back home, if or if not she was going to be able to play baseball again. Because she was failing the fourth grade before she started. And now, she's ABC student. So, we need one person, someone to help us to get a recreation. And I'm here, like I said, with no papers, two kids that are asking, "Let us have some. Everyone else gets some. Let us have a little bit. Bring our family back together." Thank you.
Are you talking about the same topic or something else? Okay.
This didn't surprise me at all. And I'll tell you why. It has happened before while Frank Abels was on the board. You should have done your homework, Mr. Davis. Because it takes more than just putting up a program to get it, to get in. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Celeste Holcomb. I'm kind of an outsider. I live right here in West Union, and my children have played at the Wahala rec for the last four years. I grew up in Westminster, and I'm a proud West Oak alum. I know many of the families in the Fair Oaks community, and was upset to hear that my rec director had voted to exclude playing the FOYC in all sports. My children want to compete against their friends, and it's my hope John will make this right. If he doesn't, I consider pulling my own children from the Wahala rec and traveling to let them play at the FOYC, where it's clear their main concern is the children. I did attempt most afternoon yesterday to contact John to hear his side, and I never got anyone to answer the phone. Last fall, at the Wahala rec, if my seven-year-old wanted to play fall softball, the only team at Wahala was one 10-and-under team. My child chose to do soccer instead, so she could play with her classmates. Salem rec also has softball, and Wahala rec would no doubt be able to have more softball teams if Salem didn't have their own rec department. Yet we don't rob Salem of their right to play where they live. Why are we doing exactly that to Fair Oaks? It's my hope my rec director will change his mind on this issue and do the right thing for our county and our kids.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, everyone who wanted to speak regarding the Fair Oaks Youth Center has now... Youth Center has now spoken. The way things work, we listen to all the different comments before we actually respond and talk. So I'm going to ask you to hang tight. We're going to listen to the rest of the public comments first, and then council will have their chance to comment on all your comments. So, David.
Skelf.
Skelf. Your turn. Where are you? There you are. I'm sorry, pronounce your name, your last name again. David.
Skelf. And I apologize, I'm not here for the Fair Oaks.
That's okay. You can talk about what you need to talk about.
It's a good topic, though. Some of you know me, some of you don't. I'm a longtime member of O'Conne County. I'm also a city council member for West Union. I'm not here in that capacity tonight. I'm a member of the Wahala chapter of the Sertoma Club, and on behalf of the Wahala Sertoma Club, I'm here to formally request county council to invest $10,000 from your ATAX account to help fund and support Wahala's first annual Stump House Music Fest. We are working in conjunction with Wahala Chamber of Commerce to organize this festival to replace the former May Fest, and the proceeds from this will benefit the Palmetto Trail Project and two local charities, Safe Harbor and the Foothills Alliance. The festival will be held April 21st at Memorial Field from 11:00 to 11:00 with food vendors, bouncy councils for the kids, and live music. This event will have an immediate impact on our community. Festivals can bring in thousands of concert goers in one weekend, and this influx on a small town packs a powerful punch. Local businesses can soar as much as 30% in their profits for that particular weekend. And it's an opportunity for people to associate positive memories with the city of Wahala. This is our first year, although we are trying to make this an annual event. Next year, we're going to be trying a two-day event. Our organization budget is small, and we want to make every effort to make it affordable for consumers. A high-ticket price will keep out our core fan base. Therefore, we would appreciate the financial support from the council. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Jean Jennings.
Good evening, council. I'm Jean Jennings. Tonight, I'm going to be talking about the Edward Brothers, the people that owned the Journal, and the two grants. The first one, they got to buy their present property on Highway 11. The second one, that Mr. Thomas Alexander, our state senator, helped them to get. The first grant, which was called, which was gotten for... Thank you, Lewis, appreciate that. Excuse me. The first grant, which was gotten for their present property on Highway 11, this was gotten through Blue Ridge Electric Co-op. The Community First Bank had the loan for the property. At that time, the Edwards Brothers was working to get the grant. Another group was also working toward purchasing the same property. The previous owner of the property had left some calibrating equipment in the building, and this group, the last group of people, were wanting to open a meter manufacturing company. The group was Becky Ballinger, and the man that had the loan at the bank, and some others. Their business would have created a lot of jobs for people in O'Conne County. They already had gotten the keys to the empty building, but the Edwards had jumped in ahead and told them that it was their property. We, the people of O'Conne County, who have power with Blue Ridge Electric Co-op, will be the ones paying for the first grant, for the Edward Brothers to get the property on Highway 11. How much did they pay? Now for the second grant, that was the one Mr. Thomas Alexander, our South Carolina State Senator, he's a state senator. The grant is for $800,000. This was awarded to the South Carolina Department of Commerce, and I put this in Economic Development Alliance, whatever. This amount came from an appraisal the county had done on the Highway 11 property. This was done when Project Omega was presented to the county council last fall. The proposal they presented called for the county to purchase the property on Highway 11, which could then be resold to one of the industries Richard Blackwell had interested in moving to O'Conne County. This was to recoup the $800,000. That was voted down by the county council. In this second grant, the Edwards Brothers said they would add to their present employees, which are now 88, that's full and part-time employees. They would add to that number, and it would grow to more than 100 jobs. Their paper carriers are independent contractors. They get no benefits, only a certain amount of money to carry the papers. So now they're getting this second grant through the South Carolina Department of Commerce. Because, in the name of the economic development, because the county council appraised the property on Highway 11. So who's going to pay? O'Cone residents, of course. Again, what's going to happen when other companies want the same thing? What are you all going to do then? Mr. Davis and Mr. Kane, two of our county council people, said they were excited about And let's remember all these people, and Mr. Alexander, and the others. The voting time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings. Mr. Shuler.
My name's Al Shuler. Y'all know I like to do my research before these meetings, and this agenda is larger than every agenda I've had for the last year, all packed into one. The backup material did not come out until Monday, and it's 300 pages long. There's no way that you can do the research that you need to do. But I'm going to start out on page five of the agenda, the little red comment about putting everything off until after the executive session. I'd like to know whose idea that was, and I'd like to know if you've got guts enough to raise your hand if you voted for it.
Mr. Shuler, the items after executive session, we can't vote on those until we heard, we hear the information at executive session.
I agree, but you'll be in executive session long enough so that nobody will be here when you vote.
Well, you're welcome to stay, I know, but we're... That's the agenda, that's what we have to deal with. We've got to do the work.
The third reading on the comprehensive law and supplements. I mean, that plan has been amended and supplemented so many times that it's completely ridiculous. I mean, if you look at the population growth on it, it's all going to happen down in y'all's golden corner. Well, who's going to want to build a house down there when you've got trucks running in and out to your industrial areas? I could not find any reference material at all on 2017 Day 4 Bremen. 2018 Day 7 is Westminster and Seneca, and the rest of the county left out of this agreement for support with the police department. Borg Warner money is split. How is it split now? How much money is it? It's not in the backup material. Spending this much money on recreation facilities seems ridiculous when we're so short of funding on so many other things. Replacement of the courthouse boiler seems needed, and it seems affordable. I see nothing wrong with that. 2018 Day 10, does our county executive really expect us to give him $365,000 and not say what it's for? That's $1,000 a day for a year. That's more than President Trump's gal makes. 2014 Day 4 and 2018 Days together. Together, they sound like refreshing the same ordinance that was voted down several months ago. The difference is the rumor going around all week that our chair lady would not be here to vote it down. So everybody thought they'd cram it in there and see if we could run it by again. Overall, I think this agenda is completely ridiculous. I think you ought to tear it up, you ought to throw it away, and we ought to meet next time with a decent agenda and decent backup material that somebody can research, and y'all would have some ideas to what to vote on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Debbie, where are you? Say something nice, please. Debbie Sewell.
Hello, everybody. I'm Debbie Sewell, and yes, it's going to be positive.
Thank you.
I'm here representing the Agriculture Advisory Board, and we just wanted to come here tonight to thank y'all for your support and thank the community for the support for agriculture, because it's such a vital thing in our communities, just as well as recreation is, and seems to be. A lot of y'all are in that same community. So, I just, we just want to thank you and let you know that we're here in advisory capacity as far as agriculture goes. If there's anything that comes up, we hope to, this year, make agriculture a topic here in O'Cone County, so everybody's talking about our agribusiness, our agritourism, and the things that are going on here as far as agriculture goes. We also want you to know that our board is made up of representatives of all agriculture communities, all levels, and if you ever need our advice, or if we need yours, we're going to come to you. And so, I really appreciate y'all and everything you've done for agriculture, and hope you continue. Thanks.
Thank you, Debbie. Okay. Time for council member comments. There is much to discuss this evening, so...
Yeah, I'll take it away.
Take it away.
You know, when this issue started coming around, I mean, it's a... It brought out a lot of passion in people in the Fair Play area, in the Oakway area, Westminster, all over the county. And I think the biggest thing that we talk about up here is none of us sitting up here caused it, but all of us sitting up here are going to work out a resolution some way, some shape, or form, because we do care about everybody in the county, no matter where you live in here, no matter which side of the county you own that we are. And we're all passionate about helping our kids. So, you know, as we work toward a resolution, I know I've fielded a lot of phone calls, and a lot of people up here have as well, and, you know, I think sometimes the biggest issue that we have is we put ourselves in there and we're leaving the kids out, and we're not thinking through what we're doing for our kids as the future leaders of this county that I fight so hard for every single time I get up here. And, you know, we... There was some stuff said through social media that obviously hurt people's feelings, and there's obvious reasons why, if you're familiar with what was out there. But a lot of those things have been apologized for, a lot of those things have been cleared up. They can't be taken back. But we can move forward and not make another wrong decision, which would be to blackball a Fair Oaks recreation out of there. Boundary lines may not be changed this season, and they may never be changed, but Fair Oaks is more than just a softball area. Seeing the kids out there and seeing the things that they do, they don't see what we're feeling in here as adults. They're in here clapping just because somebody's talking, and, you know, I'm like, "I can come anytime and clap." You know, sometimes I need a clap, sometimes, you know, we all need a hug. This is a hard job that we pour our heart and soul in as well. And, you know, the cities have provided recreation for thousands of kids for a long period of time, and, you know, these directors, they are employees of the cities, not of the county, so we're clear with that. They do pour their heart and soul in their job. They don't do everything right, but they do a lot of good things for their kids. And I think we have had some talks with them about this decision that was made, and hopefully we can move forward and get some kind of resolution out there. You know, the volunteers with Fair Oaks have answered a huge need in that area with soccer, basketball, volleyball, and some other sports that they have out there for movie night, and the numbers continue to grow out there, and the passion that you see out there is just unbelievable. And, you know, we're making huge efforts to improve recreation in O'Cone County, and that's what we're really looking for. And, you know, the biggest thing I want to leave this is, you know, think about the difference that recreation makes in a kid's life, and I want to improve it and not divide it, and that's what we need to do as a county. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Paul, would you like to chime in?
Just to echo what Mr. Davis said, we tried to provide a place for recreation to occur, and obviously, there is a place now. Unfortunately, hopefully, I guess, everybody's learned a lesson about how dangerous social media can be, how the things that are said on there cause a real impact. And while I certainly agree with y'all that y'all don't need to be left out of the conversation, you need to be at the table, it's very important to send them, to be good examples to the kids we're talking about, of to treat others the way we want to be treated. And, you know, I haven't received a single phone call from any of you, and I would ask you to please contact me if you have any issues. Don't put it on social media. Talk... I mean, you can do that, but it's not always the best forum to resolve an issue. And I would encourage y'all to communicate through means other than social media, because people just... Nowadays, they're much more willing to say hurtful things through that than they would say if they're looking somebody in the eye. And so I would just encourage y'all to be good examples, and let's work through these things as civil adults and not... things as civil adults and not let our emotions get the best of us. But I will be working to do whatever I can to help make sure that Fair Oak, in whatever capacity I can, is represented and does have, does have the opportunity to provide recreation just like everybody else. Thank you.
I'd like to echo basically what Mr. Davis said, but I would really like to thank all the volunteers, the people that spend their time, some of them are running the clock, some of them refereeing, others coaching. And one of the reasons I say that, I have a granddaughter that plays out there, in any way that we can support y'all, we'll be more than glad to.
Wayne, you wanna chime in?
No, I just want to answer Mr. Schuler. Don't feel like you alone. I get the agenda yesterday in the mail. You know, I get this whole big wad right here. I agree with you. And then Ms. Ballinger about the property and the grant, I had to find out about that when Mr. Hart called me Friday morning. Everybody else knows but me. That's how, that's how you get treated up here. You know, you got some people on the inside and then some on the outside. I'm obviously on the outside. Thank you.
I think, no, enough said about this topic. I would like to thank you all for coming and expressing your opinions. You should come more often, not just when there's a bad problem, but we listened, we heard, and we will find a way to deal with this and do something about it. I do wanna put in a plug in for Salem. I'm glad they didn't participate in that vote. Salem has, for many, many years, been the redheaded stepchild. They're quite accustomed to poor treatment, and so they opted not to participate. As a matter of fact, the majority of the people in Salem knew nothing about this until I spoke with them yesterday morning, and I myself told them about it. I was out of town for several days, and my phone did not stop ringing. My deaf father even finally said to me, "Who are you talking to and why?" So, yes, this has affected all of us in many different ways and has touched all of us in many different ways, but it will be resolved. So, once again, thank you. You're welcome to stay. We do have a long agenda to take care of tonight, and so we really need to continue at this point in time. So having said all that...
Ms. Kamik, I would like to invite at least everybody to stay through the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Thank you. Please join me for a moment of silence first. Thank you, Mr. Root.
Father, thank you for making us, for creating us, giving us air to breathe, bodies to live and move and have our beings with and to interact with one another, for the family. Us represented tonight, I know there's a lot of passion, and I know that part of it is a parent's concern for his or her children, and that's wonderful, thank you, it's given by you. Grateful for that. Great for your harmony in that situation. We'll be peacemakers, we'll do a resolution to it, and for this council, for not only that situation, but for all this long agenda, a lot of work we have to do. Thank you, give them guidance and wisdom and help us as staff to come on their side, alongside them. Best wishes.
Ms. Kamik, can I make a recommendation for the kids to come up and lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely.
So come forward.
Turn around this way, please. Raise the flag.
Let's lead the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's move on. We need to approve the minutes of the March 2 strategic planning retreat. Do you hear a motion to approve? Any changes, any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yeah, it's gonna take half an hour then. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of our strategic planning retreat. Any changes, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to approve the minutes of March 6, our regular meeting.
So move.
Any changes, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mulder.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to take an opportunity to at least address the results from the strategic planning session. Obviously, I took the guidance from council and put it into an evaluation formula in which we graded the results of your tallies. I emailed out, I believe it was yesterday, I was brought in yesterday, a copy of that report. I just wanted to briefly go over the results. I'm not asking you guys to approve that as your official strategic plan for the upcoming year, unless you feel comfortable with that. The results associated with that, and these are in priority ranking order based on the evaluation scores. Number one, a new facility for the Westminster magistrate court. Number two was to expand sewer south to the interstate. Number three was recycling center remodel improvements. Number four was industrial recruitment. Five was the upgrade, the county parks remodel facilities for ADA compliance specifically. Number six was increase the number of sheriff's office investigators. Number seven was increase workforce housing, less than 150,000. Number eight, comprehensive bike, pedestrian trails plan. Number nine, the corridor planning for Highway 123. Ten, city partnerships to encourage downtown revitalization and growth. Eleven, finalize the EMS improvement plan, ambulance service expansion. Twelve, develop technology incubator. Thirteen, simplify process for road approval acceptance. And fourteen, expansion of youth activity sheriff's office mentor program examples. Just so, to clear up, all of those top 14 that are listed got at least one vote. So I went ahead and included those on the plan if it got at least one vote from one of the council members of their five. But again, the top score getters were in the number one. Basically, we assigned a value to a number one vote, another reduced value to two, and it graduated on down to the fifth priority. So there were 14 different goals that actually received a vote out of the 19 eligible items. So that was a very diverse group of goals as council had picked. So I included all 14 of those in a priority order there. These can be adjusted by council if we evaluate those and we decide we wanna take one off or add one. Obviously, it's your strategic plan and your goals. But that's how the results were tallied as a result of the council's priority session in the March 2, the March meeting, yeah, March 2. The ones that did not receive any votes at all, I went ahead and included as an honorable mention, if you will, but weren't prioritized. That way, if an opportunity does come up where we can evaluate those in our plan, I listed those as well. So again, I'd submit the report to you officially as a result of your meeting. You're welcome to, you know, ask any questions, approve it tonight if you're happy with it. If you'd like more time to review it and see if there's any other inclusions or exclusions, we can bring it back at the next meeting. So that was just a quick summary of the results. I didn't go through the whole plan for you because we can read it at a later date.
Why don't we just approve it at the next meeting? Give us some more time to look through that.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay. So we need to include it on our next agenda for approval. We do have a public hearing today for ordinance 2018-06, an ordinance to amend and supplement the Oconee County comprehensive plan. No one signed up for the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak now, they may. If anyone would like to submit written comments to our clerk, they may at this point. And otherwise, I'll just go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll take the third reading on this.
Motion to approve ordinance 2018-06.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to thank staff for their hard work and also the planning commission in going through this giant document and updating it. I know we have another update or rewriting.
Full rewrite.
A full rewrite of the comprehensive plan coming up soon, but certainly do appreciate the staff's hard work and the planning commission's hard work in this.
Anyone else? Mr. Schuler, I just wanted to make some comments to you about this giant document that was really hard to upload into our system to begin with. The entire document did not change. This is actually quite an old document, and only some minor changes were included in it, and that's really what we're voting on, those minor changes that were included.
How can you tell it's... How can you tell by looking at it?
There was a list. We had a list of the changes.
Excuse me, ma'am. I could not tell by reading the document what was a change and what was...
And I actually made the same comment when we took the second reading on it because what was changed wasn't highlighted within the document. We had a separate list of those changes. So, yes, I admit that at that time, it was hard for me to figure out what the changes were until I was pointed into the direction of the document that listed the changes. So that's what we're voting on today.
Is that document on the web?
It should be. These giant documents are often hard to upload so that they're all there.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This is the same document without any changes that has been online for the last three meetings. The, what's called the overview of the 2018 revisions. The comprehensive plan is what the planning staff put together is at the back of the document, which outlines the updates. And as you said, these are, these are not substantive updates, these are data updates.
Right.
And catching us up to time with projects and goals that have been accomplished and things that are ongoing that the planning commission revised, that they have to do after review periodically, at least once every five years. And to Mr. Schuler's earlier point, this document hasn't been amended a bunch of times. This is the first time in eight years that it's been amended. It has to be reviewed, and then it has to have a full rewrite in 10 years, which is...
It's just coming up.
The planning commission has started work on that.
How, how long is the, all those changes?
The summary page?
It's, yeah, it was 11 pages, the summary?
Seven pages.
Seven pages. Can we make a copy of that for Mr. Schuler, please?
We can have my copy.
Okay, thank you. Okay, where are we?
Just call for a vote.
Okay. Having said all that, any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, second reading of ordinance 2017-34, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an extension agreement between Oconee County and Project Bremen.
So move.
Second.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Obviously, I did not go through my agenda summary like normal because it is so long.
I know.
But so, if we get to any of those items that you guys would like further clarification, please don't hesitate.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion about this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First reading of ordinance 2018-07, an ordinance authorizing the execution, delivery, and implementation of an intergovernmental agreement between Oconee County, the City of Valhalla, and Michael Prenshaw, Sheriff for Oconee County, in relation to law enforcement, et cetera, et cetera.
Make a motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance 2018-09, an ordinance approving, confirming, ratifying, and authorizing certain acts and agreements by and between Oconee County and Borg Warner, et cetera.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance 2018-10, entitled only, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an equipment lease purchase agreement in the amount of not exceeding $365,000 to defray the cost of acquiring various equipment. Now that one you need to explain.
Make a motion to approve.
Any discussion?
Please. Yes, ma'am. This is actually the leasing of the funds for the purchase of the HVAC system at the courthouse.
At the courthouse.
If you'll look, the HVAC system, which you'll approve later, is $363,691. This is lease financing not to exceed $365,000.
Okay.
In order to purchase that. We looked at a leasing agreement with the company that were buying it, but their interest rate was so much higher than what we can get by doing a private placement with a bank. So the second reading will have the documents with the leasing ordinance, which will spell out the equipment we're buying.
Okay.
But that is the actual lease financing to buy the replacement equipment for the courthouse that you'll approve later. We did it this way because you gotta have the money approved before you can actually approve to buy the equipment. That's why we started it first. If you guys didn't approve the financing, then we certainly didn't want you to approve buying the equipment.
Okay. Do you have a motion in second? Any further discussion?
I just wanted to give a clarification on that. I wasn't trying to speed it along, I just wanted to make sure we got to the proper way of having the discussion on that correct.
No, that's correct.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't...
No, that's good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry, that's...
It's all right.
I'm in favor.
Okay.
I'd like to see in Big Trail, where's Becky at? Ms. Whitfield, where's she at?
She's coming in here.
Action items, 911 emergency recording equipment and communications for the amount of $68,956.50.
Make it approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
I would like to just point out that this is funds coming from the 911 surcharge funds that the sheriff's department gets from the telecommunications companies. It's just not coming out of the tax, local tax dollars, if you will, but it is coming from those surcharges.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? PRT Commission, local ATAX recommendations.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, we'd like to thank the ATAX group and the PRT Commission for meeting with that. I know they spent a lot of time looking through a lot of things, and just would like to thank them for those recommendations.
Anybody else?
I have a question on that. I can't find the paper on one of those advertisements. I'll just let the question go, so I can't find the pages.
Mr. Shirley's here, if you got it.
And I've got it listed, but you wanna see my list?
Yeah, I'd like to see the list. I have mine marked. Oh, yeah, I got it, I got it, thank you. Well, let's discover the... Well, this is Discovery Upstate Carolina. For advertisements, you got 4,000 bucks. What does that pertain to you?
Discover Upcountry is a state tourism partner. They cover the six up-country counties, Anderson, Oconee, Pickens, Greenwood, Sparkburg, and Cherokee. And they market us as a county on the bigger stage than what we do. So we market locally, we market, you know, regionally. They travel with the state and will market the state and our portion of the state throughout the rest of the U.S. and internationally.
Okay. That's the only question I have.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All in favor of the local ATAX recommendations?
Aye.
Court improvements, those are tennis courts improvements for South County Park, South Cove Park, South Cove County Park. In the amount of $220,104.50, the pickleball players will be thrilled.
It's over the tennis player.
Do I hear motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I ask Mr. Reed a question?
Sure.
Does that need to be a two-part motion?
Oh, it is.
Yeah, just confirming.
Yeah. It is the staff's recommendation that number one, council approved the award to McGrath Industries LLC, DBA Talbot Tennis of Marietta, Georgia, in the amount of $200,095 with a 10% contingency of $20,009.50 for a total award of $221,04.50. And number two, authorize the county administrator to approve any change orders within the contingency amount. That's how it reads. Any other discussion on this?
Yeah, we'll ask a question. How come it is that we put it out on bid and the bid comes back with the contingency comes out to be exactly what we had the budget?
Because these funds weren't exactly budgeted. These were funds that were pulled together from multiple sources. So we pulled together, ATAX, when they approved it, they knew exactly how much they needed to approve. So they only approved the dollar amount they needed to cover the cost of the job. Then with my contingency, obviously, we only allocated out of that what we needed to actually satisfy the bid. So the budget amount is the exact amount because those dollars were pulled to satisfy exactly what we needed to pay for the bid. I'm not going to pull aside budget monies above and beyond what we actually need.
Amazing.
We do good work. We really do.
Okay. Anybody else? All in favor of fixing those tennis courts?
Aye.
Replacement of the courthouse chiller, boiler, and controls facilities maintenance amount $363,691.
So move.
Second.
Just to clarify, the dollars in our energy savings plus the rebate amounts that we'll receive for upgrading the cost of the efficient, more efficient equipment will be enough to actually pay for the annual payment on the lease and save just under $10,000 a year.
Wow, that's pretty good.
So it's actually going to be a savings to make this switch out. Our, when we run the calculations, our total payback is within five to five and a half years. So after five to five and a half years, we'll receive the full benefit of the savings.
Very good.
And based on what I've seen with the company, they are actually going to be here when we, if we have an issue through the warranty and everything like that.
Yeah, we've actually upgraded to a five-year service contract on everything, not just on the boiler or the chiller. It's going to be controls, software, all the equipment. So it's a, we've got a five-year service contract included in this price to cover it for a five-year warranty period.
That's what I wanted, I want to make sure you mention that.
Once we approve this, when's the work going to start?
Well, obviously, we'll have to order it. We still need to approve two more readings of the ordinance to get the money.
Mm-hmm.
We'll probably go ahead and sign the purchase order as soon as you approve the purchase tonight. So it'll take them a while to order this kind of equipment. It's not like your normal kind of equipment that's just sitting there on their shelf. I don't have the exact start date. From my understanding, it'll take probably 60 to 90 days for them to actually start the work. But I can get that answer more specifically.
Well, I was just wondering if that's going to take care of them for the summer months, July, August?
It will, yeah. They guaranteed us they'll have it up and going before the real heat of the summer hits.
Okay, very good. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Utility infrastructure improvements for Oconee Industry and Technology Park.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Mr. Mulder, you and I talked the other day on the phone. And it would be in the county's best interest to increase the sewer line to either 10 or 12 inches. Water or liquid does not know volume, it's static pressure. Volume is a result of the need of static pressure moving whatever is through the line. We also need, because once you do the labor of digging the trench, we only talk about the increased cost of materials. That's all. We put it in too small, we're going to come back later on, hey, we ain't got enough water, so-and-so is using too much water, and now we're going to have to dig it up again and put another line in. We also need to look at the 10-inch water line. That thing needs to go between minimum of 12, 18 would be comfortable. And it's one time, it's done.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Just a quick clarification. I did speak with Ms. McCall. We have made that note. Once it's awarded, we'll go back and have the contractor give us a price for the upgrade of that equipment. And then we can use the contingency money associated with that to help pay for those additional costs and then hope we don't have any other major issues come up. So we've made that note.
Is all this going to be done, ready to go for that campus to open in August?
Yes, ma'am. The utilities should be fine. We're still dealing with some of the road issues with regard to the federal grant. The state is administering the LAR grant that we received for the road work. The federal regulations on that are overbearing and that's the part that we're concerned about, not having in before school opens in August. We've come up with a temporary solution to have the existing construction road come in. We'll upgrade that using the funds that we have and make that the paved entrance for August's open date. And then we'll come in and finish the roads. We were on schedule to complete it until the LAR federal regulations and the grant requirements is dead stop right now. So we can't do anything until they release it. We've done all of our part. We've sent them all their plans, the engineering. We've done everything, answered all the questions, and now we're just sitting in a steady waiting period until they finish their review.
All right.
I called the state, talked to them, and, you know, they're pushing as hard as they can. We're both in the same boat, so. But we have a solution for them. We've communicated that to Tri-County Tech. They've agreed with that solution and approach, and that's the way we're going to go.
But it's going to be paved, right?
Yes, ma'am. It'll be a paved access.
Because right now, it's a mud road.
It'll have a turnaround for buses, so we'll come in and pave that road for temporary access.
Okay. All right. This was actually a two-part action item. Number one, approve the award for utility infrastructure improvements to Tugalo Pipeline Inc. of Westminster in the amount of $822,014.05, which includes a 10% contingency. And number two, authorize the county administrator to approve any change orders within the contingency amount. Any other discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Approval to allocate economic development funding in the amount of $75,000 to support the Palmetto Conservation Foundation for the Palmetto Trail Extension. Do I hear motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Will it be taking money from our economic development funds and spending on this?
Yes, sir. The Economic Development Fund this year has a remaining balance of around $250,000 of unallocated funds. There was a request that came in for this in addition to a request for the ADA restrooms at Chaw Ram Park. So I've been talking with Mr. Blackwell. He sent a memo to me stating that these are some things that he would like to take care of, all of which were part of the Destination Oconee Plan in addition to having a community impact for economic development. The Palmetto Trail Extension, the Palmetto Conservation Foundation has the opportunity to get two additional grants if the $75,000 will be allocated to assist them as matching monies toward those grants to assist with the completion of Phase Two, Phase Two's bike trails as part of that Stump House Tunnel Bike Trail System. So this will be an assistance to the City of Wauhalla's trail system in addition to helping the Palmetto Conservation Foundation obtain additional grants. So this money will be threefold as a result of the allocation.
Can I ask where this trail goes? Does it pass by the middle tunnel?
We have a map. If you'd like to see it, is it big enough to... I'm not sure. It does show the location of middle tunnel, but if I can approach...
Turn on top mountain.
This is the actual, the mapping system of the trail. Everything in red is what will be completed in that phase.
Reservoir.
I don't know, I couldn't orient it either. Assuming this is the main road and then that is the road coming in.
Anyway, the mountains. That's your water reservoir, yeah. I don't know exactly where it's at. I think it must be in this area. There used to be a trail beside it. I was wondering if they just widened it.
I don't know.
Any other discussion on this?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to state for the record, I think it goes without saying, but I'll say it because I know there are a few people that don't believe that tourism is economic development, but tourism is economic development. We talk about recreation, how important, we just had 100 people in here talking about how important recreation is. These same assets that tourists enjoy when they come to our community can also be enjoyed by our residents with regard to recreation. And I think this is an awesome opportunity that many communities in this state and this country would love to have. And I'm just grateful to the Palmetto Conservation Foundation and all those stakeholders who have been involved in this process to think it worthy in Oconee County to put, invest a lot of money here. We know that we have something special here and we're, I'm very grateful that the Palmetto Conservation Foundation sees the special asset that we have. So I'm just really excited to see what happens.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Mulder, what about those ADA accessible bathrooms? Were we going to also use some of that money for that?
Yes, ma'am. We're having to get those designed. We've still got to go through the bidding process and everything.
Okay.
So that's going to be a little bit longer.
Okay.
But we are moving forward with that. Yes, ma'am.
Board and commission appointments. We still have the one-at-large seat open on the Building Codes Appeal Board. I still haven't seen any applications that would fit the bill for that. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Mr. Davis, would you like to give us the recreation pass? Or have you had enough of that for one night?
Please don't.
Let's move forward so we can get out of here, so...
Do you want to pass?
Yeah, we'll pass on that so we can, that, I mean, that's because it's not really that necessary and as we move forward, so we can, it'll save a little bit of time.
Okay. Mr. Kane?
I'm going to read mine word for word.
Okay.
No, I just wanted to provide the council with an update. The Planning Economic Development Committee met February 27th. We discussed a number of things. Near and dear to my heart is the Utica revitalization discussion, which was, there was a presentation made by Mr. Nelson Vassi. He discussed the number of homes in Utica, the fact that it is a multicultural community, it's low income, there are a number of elderly that live there. He asked for help because there are a number of dilapidated structures that threaten the health and safety of residents in that area. There are a number of abandoned houses that drug use and manufacture is able to take place and that is something that, obviously, we don't want to see. So there was discussion of applying for a grant, updating the county ordinance and code with regard to the solid waste and littering ordinances. And we also talked about putting some dumpsters out there on a temporary basis. There was no action taken or no recommendation made out of that committee, but we did say we'll bring it up at a later date. We also developed our priorities for inclusion of the strategic plan, which you all saw. And Mr. Davis opened up that discussion to include workforce housing, development of industrial properties, expansion of Sewer South, and working with the cities to encourage downtown revitalization and growth. Ms. Darlene Green, Chair of the Board of the Oconee County Chamber of Commerce, discussed the strategic planning session that they held and working with the county and other municipal partners with an economic corridor plan from Hartwell Village on into the county as well as the Palmetto Trail. Took no action on that matter. We also had an update on the traditional neighborhood development from Mr. Chapman, our planner. The Planning Commission was asked to create a traditional neighborhood development district plan, and the Planning Commission requested more details from our committee regarding the TND. There is a developer that noted a Patrick Square-like development cannot be built in Oconee County due to not having that type of zoning district despite it being high in demand among new home buyers. So basic components of a TND are interconnected in tighter streets, smaller or shorter front setback, sidewalks, and utilities constructed within the right-of-way, and we took no action on that matter. We also discussed clarification of code sections in chapters 32, 38, and 26 of the code ordinances. And Mr. Chapman had developed a list of items that are inconsistent and were brought to the Planning Commission. The list was provided prior to the meeting so all members could review. Mr. Davis made a motion, seconded by Mr. Hart, and approved unanimously to send the clarification list back to the Planning Commission for corrections. Finally, we had our economic development update with Mr. Blackwell, the Oconee Economic Alliance Director. We talked about a number of different things, including logos, the mission of the OEA, economic development efforts, fee in lieu of tax revenue growth, manufacturers, depreciation reimbursements from the state, product development updates. And then Ms. Janet Hartman, Destination Oconee manager, addressed the downtown initiatives that are taking place. Thank Oconee's first birthday, promotional item blends, the Oconee County Regional Airport Partnership, and the Great Oconee Cleanup. Committee took no action on the matter, and our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 5th at 5:00 p.m. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I have a quick question, if you don't mind.
Yes.
To you or to Mr. Mulder, what are the obstacles to placing those dumpsters at Utica?
There are no real obstacles to placing those dumpsters there. It was something that was kind of brought up as a general discussion and really no decision was made.
Well, I heard, I watched it on YouTube, so I heard the discussion on that. But to me, that's just sort of an easy step to take to start cleaning up that area.
We've done that in the past in the Port Bass community. There was a request for dumpster assistance in that community on a couple of occasions, actually, and we were able to go out and place one of our roll-off containers. They used it to clean up an old abandoned, burned-down structure, and then we came back when they were finished and hauled it off. So we have utilized that kind of program in the past. So, I mean, I would recommend that the grassroots leader of that group, the gentleman that spoke, if he can identify and get me in touch with property owners that would like that assistance, we can certainly work with them.
Does our, our land comes up to Owens Road, correct, that we're clearing right now?
Yes. That's correct.
So while we're clearing, is there a possibility we could...
Well, we're obviously not doing the clearing.
Well, per what we approved, we don't know. We talked about a buffer, so obviously, we're leaving a certain amount of trees, but is there a possibility that we could clear out a specific area, put some gravel down and...
Well, we actually will bring, so if there's a particular property in question or has an issue... an issue, we'll actually put it at their front sidewalk or front street edge or on the property in the driveway. So we can do that, and if the community has a whole street, we can obviously pick a, you know, if there's a property on an agreement, we can set it right there in the middle where the whole street can use it. So we do it multiple ways. I mean, if we want to make it easy for them, so we don't want to put it way out, you know, at the top of the neighborhood or top of the community and everybody has to drive up there, we'll actually place it at those properties that need the assistance, make it easy.
I'll talk to Mr. Vassi about getting in touch with you.
You're fine.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we need to recess for executive session for the purpose of, one, to receive legal advice and discuss potential lawsuit in relation to the opioid epidemic; number two, to discuss an economic development matter, Project Echo; number three, to discuss an economic development matter, Project Crumble; number four, discussion regarding economic development matter, Project Zeta Two; and number five, discussion regarding an economic development matter, Project Lakeside Lodge.
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in executive session. We do have a few motions to make.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to direct the administrator and our attorney to negotiate a contract with Harrison and White Law Firm and bring that contract back to counsel for consideration.
That's in relation to the opiate litigation.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Like a motion to approve Resolution R 2018-04, Inducement Resolution identifying Project Crumble satisfy the requirements and note the 35 percent. So SSR correct?
Second.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I can make a motion to approve.
Yeah.
Crumble again?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. I thought that was right. Ordinance 2018-11, ordinance authorizing execution delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement between O'Conne County, South Carolina and Project Crumble. And that would again state the 35 percent. Is that correct, SSR?
The ordinance definitely stated both. They tracked together, yes.
And that's in title only?
Mm-hmm.
Second motion.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? One more. Second reading of ordinance 2018-08.
Madam Chair, if I could, before we take action on second reading on 2018-08, could I have a motion to direct the county attorney to negotiate the public infrastructure reimbursement agreement, which is the subject of 2018-08, to put it in a final form with counsel for Lakeside Lodges attorneys?
So moved.
As discussed in executive session, I'm sorry.
So moved as discussed.
Second.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn.
Oh, no, no.
Oh, no, not yet. What? I'm sorry. I'm just trying to get.
Usually ready for the adjourn, but we do need to do second reading on 18.
Okay. Motion to approve second reading ordinance 2018-08.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Now I'll accept your motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.